Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 22nd, 2017 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May I please have a roll call? Roll call, Mr. City Mayor.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sunanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpetian.
Here.
Flag salute is done by Councilmember Najarian. Thank you. Please rise.
Well, I hate to surprise anyone. Why don't our scouts come forward and help me in the pledge to our flag? Is that okay? Not to put you guys on the spot or anything, but you know how it goes. So, everyone, please join me in the pledge to our flag and our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. These last two weeks, as our nation has been torn, has been sent into a torrent of upheaval, tearing itself apart over the ghosts of our past and the demons of our present. Each day, we continue to paint friend and foe with broad brushstrokes, as we bear witness helplessly as more lives are lost in acts of senseless terrorism in Spain. And as we stand here in these chambers or in our homes, we have more questions today than we had yesterday. It is at this moment we turn to prayer and seek answers, and so we bow our heads and seek wisdom and guidance in prayer. This evening, we draw our inspiration from the words of the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., who, from his jail cell in Albany in 1962, serving a five-day jail sentence for refusing to pay fines, wrote a sermon about loving one's enemies. In it, he wrote that quote, "There is some good in the worst of us and some evil in the best of us. When we discover this, we are less prone to hate our enemies." Reverend King truly and honestly believed this, which is why he wrote that quote. We must come to see that in the end, what we seek is a society at peace with itself, a society that can live with its conscience. So whatever your thoughts are this evening about the recent terrorist attacks in Barcelona or the protests and counter-protests around our nation, let us pray that we are able to see some of ourselves in the person who we claim to be our foe, so that we may seek a society at peace with itself and with a conscience. We pray for peace to envelop those who are ready to embrace it here and all over the world, tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Katsakhian. What's next on the agenda?
The agenda for the August 22nd, 2017 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, August 18th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Under presentation and appointments, at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, August 29, 2017.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. We do have a special City Council meeting to be scheduled for the afternoon, and we will have a number of items in the afternoon to be able to balance out the evening's agenda as well. So, as I read the council agenda items for the evening, please note that a couple of the items will be in the afternoon, and that will be posted as of this Friday on our website. So, for consent items, we do have Director of Public Works, MSB Painting and Exterior Concrete Repairs. This is advertising for bids. Director of Public Works, this is Safe Routes to School Improvements for the Hoover Keppel Toll Schools and the East Chevy Chase Drive. This is also advertising for bids. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, proposed upgrade of the Grandview Pump House, switchgear for 12K V operation. We're advertising for bids. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is summary vacation of a portion of City of Glendale's electric easement on properties located at 749 and 765 Glenmore Boulevard and 1652 Gladys Drive. Police Chief, County of L.A. Real Estate Fraud Prosecution Trust Fund and the Award of Grant Funds for the purpose of this prosecution and investigation of real estate fraud. Fire Chief, this is an amendment to a professional services agreement with Westnet Inc. for onsite maintenance and 24/7 technical support. Director of Library Arts and Culture, this is regarding purchase of books and materials from various vendors. Under action items, we have Director of Community Development, this is the ED Expansion Grants Report. City Clerk, we have the 2017 Post-April Municipal Election Review and Analysis. Director of Human Resources, we have request for proposal for legal advisory services to the Glendale Civil Service Commission. Lastly, we have two items under hearings. Director of Community Development, this is regarding 145 North Louise Street. This is a variance for a combined Stage One and Two Design Review and Instrument Imposing Covenants on Real Property. And lastly, Director of Community Development, Appeal of Parcel Map located at 2116 Rim Press Drive. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. What's next, please?
B is Appointment of Board and Commission Member. This was the nomination of Councilmember Najarian made on August 15, 2017. It is at B1, it is the nomination of Ronnie Garibian to Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Garibian, Ronnie Garibian, has been a longtime resident of the City of Glendale. He's a professional involved in finance. He has a local television program. He is involved in many, many local charities and civic groups. I would move Mr. Ronnie Garibian for a position on the CDBG.
I'll second it. Roll call, please. Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sunanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would be remiss. Mr. Garibian is in, and if he'd like to just come up and express some short remarks, we would appreciate that. And so everyone gets to know him, and he'll be working with a fine commission for the city.
Eric Garpetian, Councilmembers, city staff, thank you very much. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Najarian for nominating, and of course, rest of you guys for accepting nomination. I am thankful for your trust in me. I do promise that I would fulfill the obligation. It's upon me to the fullest for the city's satisfaction. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Next item, please.
C is Appointment of Board and Commission Members. These were the nominations of Councilmember Sunanian, also made on August 15, 2017. C1 is Alejandro Parahon to Audit Committee. Two is Linda Burns Commission on the Status of Women. And three is Zanku Arminian to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee.
Councilmember Sunanian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have Alejandro Parahon, who is also a longtime resident of the City of Glendale, product of Glendale's school system. He is currently serving in the position of the Audit Commissioner. He's my appointee, and he'll be merely continuing on that board. He does, he is the principal of Paragon Business Solutions LLC, which is an accountancy firm in the City of Glendale. Once again, very active socially in the City of Glendale, proud Sunrise Rotarian, and so on and so forth, an excellent candidate. So I would like to move his candidacy to continue serving on the Audit Committee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sunanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes.
Next candidate is Linda Ann Beckburns for the Committee on the Status of Women. She is also a very long, although she's from Canada, she is a longtime Glendale resident, an active participant in Glendale's social and public life, and also currently serving on that committee. She'd be merely continuing her tenure, and I would like to move her candidacy for the position of Commissioner on the Status of Women.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sunanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes.
Thank you. And my last candidate is Zanku Arminian, who is also currently serving as CDBG Advisory Committee member. He is, he works for Edison. Don't hold that against him. But all jokes aside, he's a professional, highly qualified, I believe has served as the Chair of CDBG, and would continue to be an asset to our city. And therefore, I'd like to move his candidacy for Community Development Block Grants Commission.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sunanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes.
And since none of them are here, we will not invite them to speak.
Maybe they can come back next week and speak.
They can.
Next item, please.
Consent items, including minutes following a routine, and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Can I have one of them? I want, yes, D.
Or D?
Or D.
Okay. I'm sorry, that was for...
D like David.
As in David.
D like David.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Yes. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sunanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes.
Mr. Agajanian.
For D is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding contract award to Vaughn's Industrial Repair Company for the repair and maintenance of biogas compressors and equipment, spec. number 3634. D1 is motion authorizing City Manager or is designated to enter into and execute a contract with Vaughn's Industrial Repair Company for the repair and maintenance of the biogas compressor and equipment, specification number 3634, in the amount of $159,912.
Mr. Agajanian.
Yes, on 4D, I have problem again, not with the issue at hand, that to give the contract to Vaughn's, I guess, Industrial Repair. I'm having problem, as usual, with bidders. We have two bids on this matter. One is $159,000, and the other one is $763,000. First, I don't know how this happened. I mean, I did this before. People were bidding on different projects, and it was, let's say, it was for $200,000, there were at least six, seven, 10 bidder on that subject. And the bids were so close, like, one would be like $200,000, the other one would be $202,000, $210,000, $220,000. I can't believe it, that there is only two companies are bidding on this, and one is asking for $159,000, the other one is asking for $763,000. I mean, how this happen?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, all I can tell you is, and I think historically you have seen this, when it comes to the power plant, there is no rhyme or reason. It is an old plant. It has a lot of old parts. It has a lot of old equipment, and very few people in this day and age even work on it. Now, in this particular case, Vaughn is one of the very few companies that work on biogas-related projects. I will tell you, we asked ARB, "Why did you even bid if your price was so high?" And they said, "Because we figured if nobody else bid, we'd take a shot at it." So we threw a big dollar amount out there and took a chance. We're in town. They are in town. They don't have to mobilize. They're working on other projects. They took a gamble. And lo and behold, they lost, and they lost bid. And Vaughn is a company who we've done business with before, who's bid and won on our projects. And in a lot of cases, other firms know that, and will stay away from the project. So the price they bid is very, very competitive. This is, again, one of the few companies that works on biogas projects. There are not a lot of biogas projects in L.A. County, much less the state of California. So there isn't a lot of firms out there that work on these kind of issues.
But the way you are explaining, I mean, I still have problem, because you say, they say the other company was taking a chance. So they don't know, the other party, how much is bidding on the projects, what chance they are taking. They don't know what the other party is doing. So there is no...
I was referring Mr. Agajanian to the high price. They didn't, they weren't that interested in the job, but figured they'd go ahead and put the bid together. Remember, when they put a bid together, you don't get paid to do that. So that's a chance you take. Anytime is you have staff time that's non-billable to put together a bid. So they bid at a very high price, thinking maybe nobody else would bid, and they might be considered. I can tell you this, if nobody else bid, even though ARB has done very good work for us in the past, I would have recommended you reject it, and we'd go back out. But in this case, we have Vaughn, a very reputable firm who does biogas projects, and came in with a good second bid. As far as, you know, we send these bids out, we put them on local bid forms and bid websites. I can't beg people to come and take the job. And in most cases, we have equipment, like I said, conditions that most people can't meet. You're going to see later in here, we had one bidder on Unit 9. That was ARB. Again, you've got a situation where there's very few companies that can or will do work on our equipment or power plant equipment, biogas equipment, or old equipment.
Maybe we have to do it differently. If this is the case, on every project, we have very few bidders, very few people that come forward, maybe we have to change the way we are doing it. I don't know how, but...
And I would tell you, I don't know how either, because aside from changing rules and regulations, some of our bidders have said to us, "Your bonding requirements, we can't meet those. We can't meet your bonding requirements." Others have said, "We can't meet your insurance requirements." Others have said, "We can't meet your timeline requirements." Others have said, you know, there's issues they'd like to bid, but in some cases, they can't meet the requirements we have. And I think we've established requirements that are in the best interest to protect us as a city. So some of these firms are willing, but they're just not willing to take, to go out there and take some of the risks, or they're not able to, from a credit standpoint, a bond capacity standpoint, or an organizational standpoint. They don't have the men and resources to do the amount of work in the way that we want it done.
Are you moving the items, Mr. Longjohn?
I do have a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So, I understand how, you know, I understand your explanation, and I can see how that happens. But it sounds like we're at the mercy of one or two companies that specialize in this, because one scenario would be that Vaughn decides to just throw out a number that's not really related to the cost that's associated with providing the service plus parts. And that's, you know, kind of worrisome. I mean, what if they came back with a $600,000 bid? Would you recommend that we go back and redo the RFP process?
We'd go back and take a look at what Plan B or another option would be.
So what would be Plan B? Like, I want to know now if we're being sort of, I don't want to say blackmail, but we're being strong-armed by these companies that have a monopoly position in providing a certain type of service. What is Plan B?
Mr. Sunanian, in this case, Plan B normally would be, we'd go look at replacement equipment. However, as you know, we have another project that's going to replace this project. So we're in what's possibly our last one or two years of maintaining these compressors, which are 25 years old. If that was the case, in an extreme situation, maybe we don't push the gas to Grayson. Maybe we flare it. And instead of paying them some exorbitant fee, we simply have the gas taken care of through the flares. That means we won't, you get the renewable energy credit. We're doing probably what is the most, is the least viable or the least desirable option for the gas. But in respect to, will we be held hostage? No. We always have that very, very absolute way to relate to the situation. And again, I told, if this wasn't within the engineer's estimate, I would have recommended to you that we reject everything. And certainly, the $799 that ARB put in, and we had some words with them, I will tell you, about the fact that how much business they've done, and they've done good work for us, that, you know, this is kind of an embarrassment, that you would actually think, even if you were the only bidder, that we'd give this to you. So in our case, we'd ask them, "Please don't bid in the future. If this is the best you can do, don't bid." And we prefer that. So, like I said, in this case, it may not be the most desirable outcome, Mr. Sunanian, but we would have a little bit more of an extreme plan to rectify that if the bids were high.
And what was the engineer's estimate on this?
It was 200.
Okay.
I'll move the item. Mr. Chek, there's a question.
And I think that's the important thing when we talk about these, is what the engineer's estimate is. You know, it's, were the engineer's estimate to be much lower, and it appeared as though we were getting fleeced by the bidders, that would raise the flag. But coupled with the engineer's estimate of 200,000, I think it puts it in perspective that the winning bid, the Vaughn's bid, was in fact a good bargain. And you're absolutely right, which is why, which is what we looked at, and I should have mentioned that, thank you, would be why we'd bring it forward to you. Again, we have a $200,000 engineer's estimate, and the lowest bid's $500,000. We got a problem. And that's not something I would ask you to approve.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any more comments? There's a motion on a second roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sunanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda at 5 is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comment? Sure. I'll go first. Last, I think it's Friday, we attended, me and two colleagues attended a public hearing regarding the joint use of Wilson Middle School's green space as an after-school park, place where soccer, kids could play soccer after hours, after school hours. And I have to say that the meeting was very well-attended, and everyone that spoke was very thoughtful. I mean, the concerns that were expressed by the residents in opposition to the project were reasonable and thought out. And at the same time, folks that spoke in support of it were also very strong. And I just want to thank everyone that came. Also, want to mention that one of my colleagues left, so that we wouldn't be in potential Brown Act violation, per advice of our city attorney. But it's a very interesting concept worth pursuing, and really balancing all the interests, making sure that what we're doing is best for the city and for our children. Next, I wanted to mention something. Many of our residents are probably aware of the murder that took place on August 8, 2017, in Montrose, really a type of crime that we have become very unaccustomed to. Glendale prides itself on its safety, and this robbery, murder was very unusual, and really marks an escalation of just a general wave of increasing crime that we've been experiencing over the last two, three years, since some very unfortunate decisions were made on a state level. Well, I want to make sure everyone knows that the suspect, suspect involved in the murder has been tracked down and arrested through the efforts of Glendale detectives, and also the Detectives of the United States Marshals Regional Task Force. And I think that's very reassuring. It's important for our residents to know that we have competent law enforcement officers, both local and regional, and that any crime of this proportion will be pursued to the very end, to make sure that the suspects are apprehended. I wish somebody from the PD was here to give us some information, more info than we know about as to how this went down. But I guess no one's here, so...
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Sunanian. Ms. Devine, please.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to revisit an item that came up last week during oral communication. Carol Boucher from the Northwest Homeowners Association came to the mic and asked about special enclosures in the GWP, or not GWP, though, yeah, the bills that were, are sent out concerning the bulky item pickup, and yeah, inserted into the GWP utility bills, and a banner in Kenneth Village. And I'd like to, if there's an update, I understand we have one, for those homeowners that are interested in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Valani?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilman Devine, I'd like to share some statistics just to show the magnitude of this issue that we're handling. Last fiscal year, 1617, we picked up 2,500 tons of items. This was because of 22,000 scheduled stops, and we made over 3,500 abandoned item stops. In July of this year alone, we've had 2,900, we made 2,900 stops and picked up 6,100 items. So at this rate, we're going to surpass last year's efforts. But we are mitigating this issue on several fronts. As you know, council approved the addition of a crew member, a driver, and a truck that we added into service. We have also contracted with a private vendor who is collecting items three days a week, and our two crews... and our two crews are collecting every day based on the scheduled day of pickup. As for the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association request, we are working on the design of an insert that will be sent out with the utility bills in the month of November. We're also procuring and working on the installation of a banner similar to the one on Verdugo Bridge at the Kenneth Village Business District, hopefully by late September.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that information, and I'm so happy that you took immediate action on that request. I have another item. This letter was sent to, to my email address, and it is a shame, Councilmember Sananian, that police and fire are not here tonight, because my letter pertains to the fire department, and it's from a resident, and he says that this was on, the fire occurred on August 16th. This was sent on August 17th, and he says that "Yesterday afternoon, I had the opportunity to see what the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department do when they are faced with a multifaceted house fire. As I stood there watching the coordination of the fire being fought, winds picking up and almost moving the fire to an apartment building, having power lines down to the back of the house, and one of the worst situations in a fire being that a person was trapped and then rescued from inside the house in grave condition. The men and women of the Sea Shift Platoon fought this fire, reduced, rescued the man, communicated and coordinated with each other, and brought this fire to the best absolute resolution swiftly, and as the fire terminology goes, knocked down. A firefighter was slightly, slightly hurt during the heroic firefighting and life-saving events from this incident. Chief Fish was at this fire along with his command staff, the Glendale Fire PIO, arson investigation, Glendale Police Officers, parking enforcement officers, and detectives. It is great to see the amazing collaboration that the fire and police departments have built and are building on a daily basis. Glendale Fire engines, trucks, and ambulances say Class 1 on the side of them. I vote to have a change to First Class instead." So, I wanted to make sure that all the community heard from this resident, and I hope that the, the fire department and all of our firefighters hear this letter as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. This past Friday, Mr. Chuchu Galanian and myself rode the, rode the Antelope Valley Line from Glendale Station. He enjoyed it, and we took the line all the way up to Lancaster. The point was to observe the line. This is a line that serves Glendale from the Antelope Valley coming down. It comes from Lancaster to Palmdale, Santa Clarita, Silmar, there will soon be another stop at Bob Hope Airport, Burbank, and then Glendale. We got a chance to spend a lot of time with the CEO, Art Leahy, who continued to express his concerns about the Doran Crossing. In fact, we were actually sitting in the cab car and seeing what the engineer sees, and it's a, it's a tough job, looking far ahead, because it obviously takes a long time for the, the train to stop, identify a hazard, and then decide if it's going to be a full braking mode or not. So, we hope to, we were strongly urged to wrap up that Doran Crossing issue, and we told them that it's a complicated issue, funding is a big hurdle, as well as cooperation of the city of LA. I can tell you that the Glendale Station is probably the nicest station along that entire line, and we saw quite a few, and especially in Santa Clarita, who likes to brag about being a, you know, the number three city in the county. Our Glendale Station has much more character and is much more accessible, and much more integrated to public transit than any of those other stations. So, it was very, it was very educational, and we hope to work as a council with the city of LA and Metro to find the funding to complete that Doran Crossing, so we don't have to have that, the risk every time a train goes by. Thank you.
Sir Long John, one quick question. How long does it take from here to get to Antelope Valley?
The trip to the Antelope Valley was about 80 minutes, and there was some track work being done. Part of the problem is that that, the northern part of the rail was built, and the tunnels were built about 100 years ago. So, it's a very restricted speed zone up there. If High-Speed Rail comes through, they may do a realignment, they may, they talk about building a tunnel through the, through the San Gabriel Mountains for a shorter passage, more direct, but it's about an 80-minute drive, and it's very, it's very pleasant. It beats, it doesn't beat a commute where there's no traffic, but on a commute where there is traffic and accidents, it's certainly the, the best way to go. Thank you very much.
I have a question, if I may, before Mr. Galanian, for Mr. Galanian, about the quiet zone. And I don't want to throw this at you, I just thought of this, but I've been hearing the train at 1:30, midnight, 1:30 in the morning, from the quiet, what supposedly is the quiet zone. Is there a reason that they're starting again to, to blow their horns, or?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Devine, as you may recall, the quiet zone, what we call partial quiet zone, have been implemented at only three crossings. So, at Doran, the trains are required to honk their horn, and we looked into it, MetroLink is having some track work, like Councilman Najarian mentioned, so whenever there are workers in and around the tracks, they're supposed to honk their horn as they approach the work area. So, until such time that we have a sealed corridor, or Doran Crossing gets closed, they will always have to honk their horn at Doran. So, you're probably hearing the horns at Doran, but then the quiet zones are at Sonora, Grandview, and Flower.
But it seemed, it seemed for a very, since we initiated the quiet zone, we couldn't hear them up there. I should ask Mr. Ochoa, because I know he hears them as well, and are you hearing them?
I do hear them, but I'm hoping Chuchu's going to do something about it.
Oh, do you? Are you?
No. Well, you're going to pay. But a lot of it has to do with, as Rubik says, if there is obstruction or work being done, they're going to blow. And, and you'll even hear them further north of us, and echo back against the mountains, so, certainly in my neck of the woods, northwest.
So, it may not be the quiet zone, it's, and there are workers?
Partial, partial quiet zone.
And there are workers there at 1:30 in the morning?
Yes.
So, that's probably when they work, right?
That's right.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Rubik. Shh. Okay. Councilman Zagajanian?
I just want to mention about, I mean, from the time I became a council member, there has been two projects that, it has been appealed to us, whether DRB okayed it or approved it, and then both, the owner of the property and those who are appealing that decision, they are referring to video clips of DRB commissioners' discussion. I just want to suggest, we have to do something about the microphones, because they bring here, and it's hard to hear what they are saying. Specifically, the very first one, that the commissioners should go toward, apparently they are putting the drawings on the wall, and they go and refer to different piece of drawing, or saying something, which is very hard to hear what they are saying. So, since it's so important to hear what the commissioners are saying, so maybe we have to have a better system, better audio system, so when they are bringing to our attention, so we can properly or very clearly hear that, what they are saying. The second thing is, I was walking, generally when I come, I park my car in the parking garage and walk from the back toward this building. When you go outside, this, outside stairs, the steps or stairs, they're in very bad situation. Maybe we want to do something. If you want to look at the stairs in front of the building. I didn't have the chance for a long time to go out this way, toward south of the building or toward Broadway. So, you want to look at it, see if you can make it in better shape, bring it to a better shape. The third thing, I conveyed to you, to the city manager, few concerns that residents raised with me, and I conveyed to you, but one I forgot to say, one of the residents asking to look into the intersection of Valley View and Kennet. Is there a possibility to put a stop sign, they say, because it was very hard to go, to make a left turn from Valley View when they are going north to Kennet, which they are going to Kennet Village, if you want to look at. And the last thing I want to say is, the Traffic Bureau conducted at Grant, funded DUI saturation patrol on Saturday night of 8:19, a few days ago, from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. There was 31 vehicles stopped, eight field sobriety tests, three DUI alcohol arrests, two DUI drug arrests, which I don't know how they do it, but I'm sure our officers, they know what to do. But the most interesting thing is one DUI combo, meaning the guy was drunk and used trucks. This is interesting. And they drive. I mean, this is unbelievable, anyway. And it says, "Two moving citations, one narcotics arrest, six vehicles towed." And this is good, that maybe the drivers, or whoever are driving, or coming from neighboring cities, so they have to note that it's hard, or will be dangerous for them to drive in here. So, they will be arrested, and I'm glad that they arrested all those who are not following the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zagajanian. I'm going to be short and sweet. I, as far as the homeowners association on Northwest, I received a letter from them as well, and I forwarded it to Mr. Galanian, and he explained that, how the bulky pickup item is, and the sign that they're preparing. But one thing I wanted to add to it, maybe, because I know we have the MyGlendale app sign, MyGlendale app, that you can just take a picture, and through the Glendale app, and it just directs, sends that item and the location with a GPS to you, to the Public Works Department, and people don't have to call anymore, they just can use their MyGlendale app and report the bulky item pickup. I think that's something that we need to look at. I don't know if we can put that on the, on the signs or not, if, if it's possible. That's, that's... The stairs in the front, we already discussed that as well with Mr. Galanian, and it's in the works. So, generally, it's, it's going to be replaced, hopefully something nice and designer that goes with the building. And I want to thank Parks, Community Department, and Development and Parks Department for their great presentation for the soccer field at Wilson. The community was there, and that's the, the purpose of these meetings, to go out and get, get feedback from the community, their concerns, and their ideas, and suggestions, and complaints, so we can implement them and make them part of our, our plan. So, I want to congratulate all of them, Onik and the rest of the team, they did a great job. And I think the consultant was there, and he was very professional, he had all the answers, most of the answers for the, for the community, and if he didn't have an answer, he said, "You know what? I don't have an answer. We'll look into it and get back to you." So, that's all I have, and with that, next item, please.
I believe there's a staff presentation.
Staff presentation.
Well, good evening, Mayor Garpetian, and members of council. I'll make this brief. Tonight, I just wanted to update you on the efforts of Glendale Tech Week. This is scheduled for the week of October 9. This is part of the city of Glendale's greater tech attraction strategy, to really build the ecosystem of tech and innovation here in Glendale. Within Glendale Tech Week, we have a theme this year of a startup journey, and attendees will have access to panels, live demonstrations, speed networking events, a job fair, and a pitch fest. We have 47 days and counting, so any promotion assistance that we can receive, we would be much appreciated. But I did just want to highlight a few things on the agenda, as well as the speakers that we have lined up as well. So, within the agenda, you can find it all on the city website here, or, excuse me, at glandaletechweek.com, but it's a, it's a week of activities, including pop-up events. These are free events that members of the community can attend, and a two-day city summit on October 11th and 12th. Included in this are panels, which you can find the complete lineup here on the website, and this includes speakers from organizations such as ServiceTitan, which is a Glendale-based company. We have Wonder Women Tech, they're a Long Beach-based firm. We have Age of Learning, and you can find the whole list of speakers right here on the website. We also have Disney Imagineering, which will be hosting a panel, and Visual Strategist from NASA and JPL, so we encourage you to take a look here as well. This company here, Taran Lizgob, he's a founder of Knox Labs. This is actually a local company here. They manufacture cardboard Google glasses, and in fact, they manufacture about 20% of these Google glasses. So, we're very proud to have standout firms and representatives from companies like this to participate in Tech Week. You could also take a look at the growing list of sponsors here. We have some folks in this room, like representatives from Glendale Water and Power, and the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, but we also have folks on the private industry as well, and you can scroll down here and just see some of the great representatives that we have. We also have, of course, cocktails will be a part of this, and plenty of food sponsors as well. We have Nestle, which, it's a coffee. Nescafe Dolce Gusto will be a sponsor, the Buy Drinks, and some other fun activities as well. With that, I did just want to play a quick video for you, to give you one further update on this, but tickets are, early bird tickets right now are on sale for $50. We also have senior citizen tickets for $25, as well as student tickets, and that includes admission to all activities. So, we will see you all at Glendale Tech Week on the October 9. Thank you.
You have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Not, not much of a que, well, I do have a question, actually. What are the sponsorship amounts? What's the range?
So, the sponsorship ranges from, sorry, I don't know how to get out of this, so much for tech. So, they range from $750 on up to $5,000.
Okay. And I, you know, from a brief glance at the faces that were exhibited on the list of speakers, I think it's, it looks like this year's Tech Week shaping up to be much stronger than last year's. Last year was the first year, so I, obviously, it couldn't be ideal, but looks pretty good. So, on that, I want to commend you on it. I look forward to Tech Week. I'm proud to, to have initiated the tech initiative in the city of Glendale. Not that you could tell from any of the photos that were posted, but I think we can be proud of it, and it's going to be great. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sananian.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Community event announcements, three minutes.
I have two cards. First speaker is Sharon Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff, and Paula Devine, thank you for that wonderful introduction to the Glendale Fire Foundation. I'm here representing the Glendale Fire Foundation this evening. We have our second annual poker tournament this Saturday. It begins at 5 o'clock with an exciting and pre-tested-by-the-foundation barbecue. That barbecue's been sponsored by Greg Astor, and one of our board members, and a really esteemed real estate expert in Glendale. We have a full bar, and I should say, it's at the Glen Arden. Glen Arden's been a wonderful supporter and partner to the Glendale Fire Department. They have hosted the past two years Glendale Fire Department's retirement dinners. They've also been the location that the Fire Foundation has placed one of the AED defibrillators. That's been a project we've done, and we are fundraising from money this evening and trying to designate locations throughout... trying to designate locations throughout the city that need AEDs in public locations. We're asking that you come and support us, but more importantly, there's also going to be the wonderful fight. I don't know if it's so wonderful, but the big fight, Mayweather versus McGregor. So it's a great opportunity to watch that fight and not pay for it at a different location. I'm here because I need to give a bounty to someone on this podium, and that is going to Scott Ochoa. I'm going to pass this on. That means that this bounty represents the ability for someone else to eliminate you from the game, so we're looking forward to seeing you there.
Home again.
And we're going to help crown that person as the best poker player in Glendale. The Fire Foundation was established in 2014 under the direction of our previous fire chief, Harold Scoggins, and it's been led and continued to be led by Zavvin, because Zavvin is the board chair, and under Greg Fish, our current fire chief. We hope you'll join us. It's this Saturday, 5:00 at the Glen Arden. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Good way to support the fire department, right?
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Two weeks ago, behind closed doors, council was negotiating selling the historic Glendale, historic auditorium plus parking lot, 30, 31, and 32, to Glendale College. I felt Councilman Nigerian would be pushing to sell this historic asset. We need about $1.5 billion to cover our unfunded and unsustainable pension obligations to the corrupt and irresponsible Calpers retirement pension benefits. Councilman Nigerian stated, if I had read the recent LA Times article on Calpers, because the article implied it would be too difficult and too expensive to leave. Councilman Nigerian, is that what you would tell kids when there is a big challenge ahead and you want to sell your soul to the highest bidder? The article went on to state that elected officials, like from the City of Glendale, are the ones who decide what salaries and retirement benefits that would bestow upon their employees, even if those in benefits are unfunded and unsustainable. Councilman Nigerian, I stated months ago, getting out of Calpers was doable if council had the will and the desire. Caltech professor Rodrick Kiwick and the 1990 Nobel Prize winner of economics, Professor Dr. William Sharpie, have both stated getting out of Calpers would be expensive, but in the long run, it would be cheaper for the stakeholders, to include your children, Councilman Nigerian. The recent Los Angeles Daily News article dated August 10, 2017, stated the number of six-figure pensioners who belong to Calpers has risen 63% since 2012 and is rising still. Of the hundreds of cities, counties, and other government agencies that belong to Calpers $100,000 club of elite pensioners, Glendale has the distinction of being part of the top 25th worst managed cities. Top is Santa Clarita County with 861 retired employees. Number five in the bank, number five is the bankrupt city of Santa Ana. And running up close from behind is the jewel city, Glendale, number 12. Council members, will your legacy be what Mr. Nigerian always says? He is proud to have the best, the best employees that money can buy, even if that means selling Glendale Civic Auditorium and parking lots 30, 31, and 32 to pay our Calpers employees. Councilman Garpetian, Senanian, and Agajanian, do you want your kid to remember you as Councilman Nigerian, the do-nothing parent? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senanian.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to respond to such nonsense. We are a well-run city. We are leaving a good legacy for all of our children. I have not voted to sell the civic auditorium. Such discussions were made in closed session. No report has been made out. To further make such accusations is entirely inflammatory, Mr. Mohill, and has no place in the city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Nigerian. What's next, please?
Under adoption of ordinances at 7:00 A. is an ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, California, amending section 2.360010 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 and ordinance number 5604 pertaining to the limit of terms of members of the city's boards and commissions introduced by Councilmember Agajanian on August 15, 2017.
Mr. Agajanian, introduce this ordinance.
So typically, we leave, we give the honor of making the motion to the person who introduced it. So that's why we sort of.
I learned that the hard way.
We're all looking at it. We're sort of looking to you, if you'd like to. But if you don't want to, give us a sign, and someone else will.
He's wondering why we're all looking at it.
This is fine. I read it. This is what I was envisioning, and I think we can vote on it, so.
You move it. Yeah. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Nigerian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
8A is Director of Public Works Regarding Amendment to the Contract with Haynes Building Services LLC for Citywide Custodial Services. 8A1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing an amendment to increase the value of the contract for citywide and as-needed custodial services with Haynes Building Services LLC by $667,824 for remaining four years and five months of the contract period.
So, Chuck?
Yes, sir. We last year had concluded a rather large RFP process to do not just custodial, but a whole host of building maintenance functions and contract out those services. One of those services was custodial. We, at this point, are looking to add additional square footage to the contract and thus would ask you to take up this matter. I'll have our facilities administrator, Mr. Kevin Todd, come forward and answer any questions that you may have and make a brief presentation. Kevin?
Okay. Todd? Mayor Garpetian, City Council, Kevin Todd, Public Works Facilities. We have a brief presentation here summarizing the request we're making this evening. This first slide here is a summary of the procurement process we went through back in January 2016, showing that we had three bidders come forward on the RFP that was submitted, with the three, three proposals that are submitted there, with the total that was awarded, and a additional as-needed service component that was added on to that contract also. This, this slide here is showing the comparison between the existing services that we have for custodial services and what we're requesting to add to this existing contract here. We currently have about 14,000 hours in contracted custodial services. We're looking to add about 6,200 more. You can see the cost for the almost 14,000 hours compared to the cost we're looking to add for the additional 6,200 hours. You can see in, below the line there, in the initial bid, the, the average cost per hour was about $25, and we're experiencing some economies to scale by adding the additional services. There's no additional supervisors or administrators or anybody involved in the contractor staff to pick up these additional square feet we're looking to add. The added square feet that have been identified are in the, in the bold at the bottom of this slide here, totaling right about 200,000 additional square feet to what we're doing currently. This slide here is a key performance indicator slide, showing kind of how we benchmark against the industry. The $2.20 per square foot benchmark is from the International Facility Management Association as published, and the, the City of Glendale cost at $2.15 is based upon our custodial budget against the square footage that we are maintaining currently at 750,000 square feet citywide. We're looking to add 200,000 square feet. You can see that the cost, because of the lower hourly rate on the City of Glendale side, our cost per square foot goes, goes down a little bit. This is the entire summary of what we're looking to do, comparing the existing contract. The top line here showing annual cost for the custodial services. The second line of $25,000 per year for as-needed services. These are for events and other things that we, we don't have scheduled, that we dispatch custodial services on. The shaded line there being the total of, of the two. The next line being the additional service cost we're looking to add as base services, and then an additional amount of $15,000 added to this contract for those as-needed services. I believe that might be the last, that is the last slide. Questions?
Okay.
This, this contract is, is purely an addition of scope to the existing contract.
Okay. Councilmember Devine.
Yes, I just wondered, who was doing the custodial services at Pacific Park? The library and the shooting range and the parking garage? Who was doing that previously?
So the custodial services were quite disjointed previous to the consolidation under the Public Works Facilities operation, and it was handled by four different contractors citywide. Parks had some intern programs on some of their custodial services that were intermittent, hit and miss, showed up, didn't show up. Pretty hard to keep regular services going with that, that type of a program. So these, these that we're bringing forward tonight were not considered at the time of the initial, of the initial bid. We either had contracts that were still in service that hadn't yet expired, or they just weren't identified.
So, so we're just, we're recontracting for services that we've already had contracts with other services companies for?
Yes. These services were picked up one way or the other previously.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Agajanian and Mr. Senanian.
Could you go back to the slide where it says additional square foot, additional square feet? Yeah, no. No, not that. Yes.
This one here?
Can you explain one more time? Added square feet. Library, 90,000. What it means by added square feet in library?
I'm sorry?
What it means? 90,000 was added? Library was not included in that?
The central library was not included at the time of bid. If you recall, the central library was under construction when we did this contract a year ago, so we were providing no custodial services at the time.
Okay.
So that's the size of the central library.
About police parking garage?
Police parking garage was not included in the initial contract. It was in another contract at the time that had not expired.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Senanian?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Todd for the explanation, because when initially this issue was presented to me, obviously, I was having difficulty understanding how a $500,000 five-year contract could sort of run out of money so fast. But apparently, it's happened, and we need to clean up or, you know.
Councilman Senanian?
Get it right, yeah.
I believe the $500,000 references to the HVAC.
Yeah.
Contract we're talking about.
So this is just the expansion of the, of the space that Mr. Gulanyan was referring to?
This is for custodial services.
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, I'm not voting for this until I get a tour of the police shooting range. We can, we can arrange that after the vote, if there's indication. I keep asking for a, a tour and.
It's coming.
I want to, I'd like to.
I requested the same.
I'd like to see the range and, and see what sort of custodial services are needed, keep it in context. So I think on the goodwill and faith of the city manager, I will.
Just don't go downrange.
If that chuckle was, was an indication, we'll see it someday. And not just myself, but I think the entire council, without violating the Brown Act, should be up there, and we can maybe fire some questions at the manager of the.
Small, but a wire, I'm telling you what.
We can vote on it without the $1,000 for the shooting range, if you want.
A thousand square feet, but that's, that's fine. Thank you.
I just have one question. I think I know the answer. I just want to make it clear. The 5,000 hours for the library, if you divide that by 365 days, it's 13 dollars, 13 hours a day. So that's between few people that come in and clean it every day. It may take like two, three hours for four or five people to clean the entire thing and, and move. Is that how, is that how it works?
Mayor Garpetian, that is absolutely correct. There's, there's about four different custodial workers that, that service that site on any given day. There's an early shift that comes in of two. They work their hours and leave, and the rest, the other two come in and continue the day.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to move this item?
I'll move the item.
Hold on a second. Roll call, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Nigerian.
Yes.
Senanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item at B is Director of Public Works Regarding Amendment to As-Need Facility Services Contracts for Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning HVAC. B1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing an amendment to increase the value of the contract for C-wide and as-needed maintenance repairs for HVAC systems with ACCO Engineered Systems, Inc. by 550,000 for the remaining four years and two months of the contract.
Mr. Todd?
I'm bringing it up.
Mayor Garpetian, City Council, we have another small presentation here summarizing this request. What we have here is the, the bid results that we received back in May of 2016, showing that we had four of the major HVAC vendors in all of Southern California. There's probably about six companies of this caliber that would even compete on a, on a contract such as what we have here in Glendale. And fortunately for us, Acco happens to be a local contractor here on San Fernando Road that provided the lowest bid for, for HVAC services. This here shows what the, the initial contract offered, the proposal from Acco offered over the five years for preventive maintenance services. There was also a component of this contract for $500,000 for as-needed services. The preventive maintenance services are defined in the contract. They are per manufacturer's recommendation for the equipment that we do have throughout Glendale. The as-needed services are the things that we find broken along the way, or that fail on us from day to day. The as-needed expenses, you can see within the first year here, we, we put some of our biggest hits that we had, and they're, they're totaling up nearly $500,000 within the first year. This isn't totally unexpected, starting a brand-new preventive maintenance program and turning our contractor loose on all of our equipment to go see what's there, what's working, what's not working. We would certainly expect the first year to be the heaviest year on expenses, to find deficiencies, and to be repairing those. This here is a, I guess, a philosophy of preventive maintenance, showing the, the arcing curve being what our plan is to reduce maintenance costs. The dash line there for reactive maintenance was kind of the program that we were on, where we weren't necessarily, we didn't have a robust preventive maintenance program. We're kind of replacing things as they failed and not necessarily providing the maintenance that this equipment needed. The bottom here shows now what our, our current expectation is for as-needed funding over the five-year term of this contract. In the first year there, we went through the $500,000. We certainly expect that to be coming down. We have gone through all of the equipment. We have now touched all of the equipment, inspected all of the equipment, and made significant repairs to the equipment. We're not done. There's a lot of equipment out there. It's a big city. There's a lot of stuff there to maintain. We expect this to taper off, but we're not, not quite there yet.
Kenai?
Agajanian. Last time, when you presented the same graph, which I have the copy of it, it was a little bit different than what you're showing now. What has changed?
Councilmember Agajanian.
You want the copy of it?
No, I, I do remember the last one. This is just adjusted, I guess, in a minor sense to try and make it a little more accurate to the spending that, that occurred, trying to reflect that the 500,000 was our, we have hit our peak. We have touched the equipment. We have gone through the equipment, and we expect that number to now be declining.
So now, everything shifted to the year one. Before was, was kind of like between two and three between, I mean, the year two, but closer to year three. But now, the peak of it came on end of year one. So this is kind of a shift from last time.
We, we believe that we've addressed the majority of the deficiencies that we have.
Okay.
That was just making the, making the curve a little more accurate from what we had displayed last time.
As opposed to just the concept of preventative maintenance where it's higher on the front end and smoothes out in the back end, this will be much more akin to what the actual numbers are that, that Mr. Todd's talking about.
Okay. Any other questions?
The library, the library, 200,000.
The library, the library, $200,000, was that not included in our budget for the new library?
It was not, Councilman Najarian. That was not included as part of the central library project. This was a unfortunate discovery that we had this winter with the heavy rains that we had. The equipment was not identified. We never had a problem with the equipment previously. We saturated the library from the rains. The equipment leaked. A lot of the ductwork associated with that equipment is lined with insulation that got saturated. It wound up being a very last-minute repair to get the library opened in May.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, the HVAC system at the library was damaged, in essence, as a result of the rains while it was under construction?
Councilman Sinanian, yes. One of the HVAC units. There was a lot of the HVAC equipment at Central Library that was replaced. The main equipment, the chillers, the boilers, this kind of thing, was replaced. This is one air handling component up on the roof that supplies the east side. I think it's the children's room up on the second floor, that whole area, and the auditorium area. That's the unit that got damaged during the rain.
So, I guess the library remodeling cost just went up by $200,000.
Essentially. For keeping score.
Yeah, just keeping score. I wonder when it'll end. Okay, so, back to my comments. And I think that chart that Councilmember Augustinian was referring to, that reflected sort of our projection, right, as to how the money would be spent over a five-year period, and so it turned out that money just got spent down for six months because of the realities on the ground.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, obviously, I support this. We need the money to move forward and make sure that we have enough funds to keep this going. But it's worrisome that things were so out of whack for so long that money that was projected for five years got spent down in five months, five and a half months. It's really strange.
Okay.
That's all.
Any more comments?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I think it's one public to know that there are two parts to this contract. One is the maintenance, preventive maintenance, so we keep our equipment in good shape so it won't break down. And the other part is to replace the failed equipments, the equipments that are not working properly. And when you come in and take over the huge departments that we have, and so many different equipment, different pieces that we have, that's why the money's being spent on the first year, because there's so many equipments that were neglectlet for a while, and they need to be replaced. That's why we went through the, is that correct, that you went through the $500,000 the first year almost, and then from here on, this is for, this $550,000 is for the next few years? So, hopefully, we won't spend them all, but it's there if, on as-needed basis, right? It doesn't mean that we're going to spend this. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to move the item?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Augustinian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
C is Director of Innovation, Performance, and Audit Regarding Fiscal Year 2017-18 Internal Audit Work Plan. C1 is a motion to note and file fiscal year 2017-18 Internal Audit Work Plan.
So, Chuck?
We'll have our newly minted director, as well as the audit manager, come forward, present to you the overview of the coming year's audit, and I think you'll see some familiar topics, but also be interested to hear how they isolate on the topics to be studied in the coming year.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian and members of council. We do have a very short, I think it's about three slides. Thank you. So, before we delve into the planned audit projects for this fiscal year, I just want to quickly cover the difference between internal and external audit. In short, internal auditors are city staff, and they audit business systems of the city organization. They go from different, they go from one department to the next. External auditors are employees of outside firms, typically CPAs that come in once a year, and they review financial statements. Internal audit's work is ongoing, so throughout the year, they have planned audits that we'll get into. And external auditors work once a year. They come in typically at the end of the fiscal year and review the financial statement and producer report. So, why do we prepare the annual work plan? It's required by our municipal code, and it gives management an opportunity to sit down with the internal audit staff to go over any concerns that they have, any areas of the operation that they'd like to shed light on. And the work plan for this current fiscal year, you just, during the consent calendar, you just approved the audit committee report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th. And so, annually, we report to you what occurred with the audit committee, and so this is looking forward. So, as of July 1st, we have nine projects that are planned to be completed, and the audit committee reviewed these nine projects to be completed this fiscal year and made a recommendation for you as the city council to approve the completion of these projects. So, we have nine new projects planned for this year. They cover six different departments, and I just want to highlight three of them. Homeless Program Audit, this is from the Community Services and Parks Department, and the scope of the audit, which is just preliminary right now, as the auditors go in and meet with the management of that department to further delve into the issues, the scope of the audit gets further defined. So, at this point, the audit is going to be looking at the efficiency and effectiveness of the program administration. Another audit we have is a workers' compensation audit. We have a third-party administrator that processes the claims for our Fire and Police Department, and so we're going to be looking at this new contract, and we're going to assess the performance and cost savings. And then, lastly, the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program Audit requested, I think, a combination of some comments that have come up during council meetings, and so this audit is going to look at the compliance and the internal controls. And I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce Jesse Zhang, our internal audit manager, who's also with me tonight. So, with that, these are the planned audits for this current fiscal year that we will be, some of it we've already started on because it's already towards the end of August. But this is what we have planned for this current fiscal year in terms of audit projects. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Be happy to take any questions the council may have.
Okay. Any questions?
I don't, I have a question. On the Exhibit 1, you have a list of new projects planned for 2017. The workers' compensation third party, which one is that?
Yeah, it's the second one. It's, I think it's TPA, Third Party Administrator.
Oh, I see. Cost savings, performance analysis. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Just briefly, thank you for that report. I know this is all perspective. How do you come up with those lists of audit items? Does it come from the department heads or the city manager exclusively, or do you act independently in picking areas?
There's a detailed risk assessment that's completed by the internal audit staff, and it follows industry guidelines. They do meet with management of each department annually, and so, and we have had a lot of organizational change over the last few years, and so through those discussions, the audit work plan is identified.
If you think of it like a heat map as to where the greatest areas of liability or risk are, some will bubble to the top, others, even if they don't bubble to the top over a period of time, they will make their way up the list, and then ultimately go to the audit committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any more questions, comments? I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Augustinian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
D is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Amendment Number 1 to Existing Contract with Argus Contracting LP, Contract Number C105580, for asbestos hazardous material abatement. D1 is a motion authorizing city manager or his designee to enter into and execute Amendment Number 1 to the city's existing contract with Argus Contracting LP, Contract Number C105580, to extend the contract term for two years and increase the contract amount by $64,000 per year for a total of $128,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $320,000.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, three years ago, after a competitive process, Argus Contracting was awarded a three-year contract with a two-year option. That two-year option was predicated on council approval. The three-year agreement is nearing its end. The services provided by Argus are the abatement and disposal of hazardous materials at our power plant, primarily asbestos, lead, some liquid toxins that they will pick up and dispose of. The three years has been a very, very good relationship between us and Argus. We are recommending that we go ahead and exercise that two options, two-year options. And the good news is, is that Argus is honoring their original annual cost of $64,000 through these two-option years. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
This process, is it an ongoing process, or how long would it take? Is there a completion date, or it's just?
An ongoing contract that we need to...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's on an as-needed basis. Right now, Argus is averaging about 10 to 12 visits a year to our facilities for those efforts. What will happen a lot of times is, we have a, being that we have older units, we have a certain amount of asbestos in those, we have a certain amount of lead paint. If we want to work in a particular area, we'll have to have them come in and clean that area. A lot of times, it's a small area. This is not a massive abatement. But they clean the area sufficient enough for us to go in and work on it, and then they dispose of that material in accordance with California state law, and of course, they are licensed and licensed for this kind of material handling. But if we do the repower... If we were to do, if we were to do the repowering operation, we would eliminate virtually all of the existing asbestos. I don't anticipate that there would be any need for an outside firm, because our internal staff is trained to a certain degree, a lower-level degree, to handle some of these items. But the new equipment will be lead paint-free and asbestos-free.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move this item?
I'll move the item at 8D1.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Augustinian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item at E is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Approval for the City of Glendale to Execute a Task Order with Ascend Analytics LLC for Software and Consulting Services to Support Integrated Resources Planning for Glendale Water and Power, GWP. E1 is Motion Authorizing City Manager or His Designee to Execute a Task Order with Ascend Analytics LLC under an Agreement with the Southern California Public Power Authority for Integrated Resources Planning, Software, and Consulting Services for Three Years for a Total Cost to Glendale Not-To-Exceed $413,955.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in 2014, August of 2014, the city council, after a competitive process, issued a contract to Pace International to do what was the utility, GWP's first integrated resource plan. That plan was mainly for our internal use to project out where we were going to be, to use it as a planning document, both for our ability to bring power into the city, whether that was transmission and our purchase ability, and also it focused a great deal on the options of repowering Grayson. That project, at that time, was awarded for $299,000, or $500, $299.5. As we have gone forward, there's a need for us to continue to update that plan. We've seen SB 350 get passed. We are on the verge of seeing SB 100 passed. There are some issues with what I call distributed energy and distributed generation, behind-the-meter photovoltaic installations, electric vehicle charging installations, potential batteries that people may put at their house, all the kind of things that we need to include in the IRP. When I suggested we go out and have a revision to it, the cost was staggering. The $299.5 was staggering. The cost to make the revision was staggering. At that point, the state also passed a law that said it was now going to be required that we put in an IRP. Our first one is due 2019. So, now it has become a state law. Now, I will tell you this, the state law is a very, very defined system, so it's much easier to do. So, we decided to go back out and find a vendor. We took advantage of our relationship with the Southern California Public Power Authority, who, as you know, is a joint action agency. That allows us to realize that great economies of scale with the 10 other publicly-owned electric utilities in Southern California, whether that's the development of a project, preferably a renewable project, or its ancillary and corollary services that we need provided as part of running an operation. In this case, SCAPA, as we call them, along with the City of Riverside Public Utilities, put out a competitive process for an IRP, for a firm to conduct IRPs, Integrated Resource Plans. Based on that competitive process and the selection of the firm Ascend Analytics, we're recommending through a task order, and this is something that's not uncommon that we do with SCAPA, when they do the competitive bidding process as opposed to us doing it individually, because we think we can realize a much greater benefit on the price. We're recommending that we go with Ascend Analytics to not only update our current IRP, but also prepare us for what is going to be the state requirement to submit IRPs from beginning 2019 and from that point forward. So, with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And as you can see, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Let me add, if, keeping in mind that original $299.5, for some reason, I can't say that, and you look at what the cost is, in this particular case, that includes software licensing, it includes modules that we didn't have before, you can see where this, it was in our best interest to look for a different vendor and go a different direction, which we have done. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Augustinian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
F is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Contract Award to ARB, Inc. for the Unit Number 9 Selected Catalytic Reduction SCR Catalyst Replacement, Specification Number 3644. F1 is Motion Authorizing City Manager or His Designee to Enter into and Execute a Contract with ARB, Inc. for the Unit Number 9 SCR Catalyst Replacement, Specification Number 3644, in the Amount of $399,177, plus a 20% contingency in the Amount of $79,835 for a Not-To-Exceed Amount of $479,012. Two is Resolution of Appropriation to Transfer $479,012 for the Glendale Water and Power, GWP, South Coast Air Quality Management District State Sales Fund 584-27500 to the Unit Number 9 Account.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Unit Number 9, our most recent unit, installed in 2003, is a gas-fired turbine engine. It's called in the industry a simple cycle, and this particular unit has an exhaust and emissions control system in it, and that system has the selective catalytic reduction system, which is specifically designed to capture nitrous oxide emissions, has worn out, and we have to replace it. We went out and obtained some informal quotes on this and set the price that we thought, based on what vendors told us and what other utilities had paid, between $500,000 and $600,000. We took, we put it out to a competitive process. We had five firms that attended the pre-proposal meeting or the pre-bid meeting. Of those five firms, two never replied to us, two others replied to us. One, and I think I alluded to this earlier, one said the timing wasn't right. In other words, they had more work than they had men available at the time, so they passed. The other firm did not have the bonding capability that the city required. And I'll tell you, if a firm doesn't have the bonding capacity, it usually means that they're way out of their league. They shouldn't be doing a project of this size. That left one firm, ARB, who bid on the project. They came in at $399,177, which is well below even the range that we set for the project. ARB, except for that little glitch on that previous bid that they submitted, has been very competitive and has done very good work for us. They're a firm that knows our plant, and although this is a much newer unit, they are very much in tune with how our old versus, older versus somewhat newer components all work together. So, this particular unit, and I provided you all some, a graph of just what it is. You'll see in the highlighted area, that's the chamber where the NOx emissions are treated, the cataly- The catalytic converter is in there. It's the aqueous ammonia, which is water-diluted ammonia sprayed into it, and it's the nitrous oxide is turned into diatomic nitrogen and water. And then it goes to the stack to the right that you'll see on your picture, which is the emission stack, and it goes out, all in accordance with AQMD protocol. This particular emission is not a greenhouse gas in and of itself, although photochemical reactions with the atmosphere can cause it. This is one of the major contributors to smog and acid rain, which is why it is high on AQMD's hit list. So with that, we simply want to replace that converter. This particular unit, as you're aware, has a lot of life left in it, and under our repowering plan, is expected to be maintained and hopefully runs for quite some time. So this is not a unit we're proposing to replace or remove. So with that, we have to answer any questions.
So, did you say it turns into diatomic or biatomic nitrogen?
Diatomic nitrogen.
With two atoms of nitrogen?
And two. And H2O.
Wouldn't that be biatomic?
It's, they call it di. So.
Where'd you get your chemistry degree, Mr. Zern? You were doing road repaving a year or two ago. Now you're the mad scientist of the.
You sent me to another task, and I'm doing the best I can.
Geez, good job. I'm impressed. I'm impressed with that chemistry.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
What's the normal life of this SCR system?
Mr. Mayor.
Ours is what, 14 years old?
Madam Devine. It actually, this particular unit does a lot of work. And we, if you look at it, hours operated, we're probably past when the useful life is. And a lot of times, that's just an estimate that, in this case, it's a General Electric unit. General Electric will tell you that this is the useful life of the converter. We've surpassed that. So it usually is a number of hours. And I can tell you that the whole unit, two years ago, we overhauled the entire unit. So we didn't need to do this converter at that time. We did the turbine itself. So the entire unit was reaching that maintenance threshold in relation to hours worked.
When was the last time this catalyst has been replaced?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Zagajanian, this is the original catalytic unit.
I mean, it worked since 2003?
Three. Correct.
All right. Well, Mr. Zern, I did a quick calculation here. I hope we come to a conclusion as to when are we going to, whether or not we're going to repower the Grayson, or, you know, Grayson, because today only we spend $1.2 million in maintenance and everything else. So I hope that decision will come to us sooner than later, so we know which way we're going. Because maintaining Grayson is becoming very expensive. And we have to keep it. I'm not disputing this item, but.
And Mr. Mayor, I would, I want to bring it to you as fast as I can, believe me.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
G is City Manager regarding resolution reaffirming the City of Glendale's commitment to a community free of racism, hatred, and bigotry. G1 is a resolution of support.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an item that you had brought forward. As mayors, all across the country are indeed struggling to come to terms and lead their communities forward in the wake of the violence in Charlottesville. And so, as you had requested, we have assembled here a resolution that I'm sure you would like to read and discuss among the council pertaining to this notion of condemning racism, hatred, and bigotry. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. Has any of my colleagues have anything to comment or questions about the resolution?
Other than the fact that we keep passing these resolutions every six months or so, and hey, let's pass another one, definitely, because apparently all of us need to be reminded that there's no room for that in the City of Glendale. I will briefly go back to the events of the city council meeting of last Tuesday, where in our own city, an entity had denied the Armenian genocide openly in a letter on multiple occasions. And I was reading the Glendale news press in which an article had been printed. Part of the article indicated the fact that our senator, our state senator, had called upon the Americana to reverse its course. And then there were nearly 40 to 50 comments under that article online, and overwhelming majority of them were just horrible racist comments, just calling the Armenian-Americans all kinds of derogatory terms. It's unfortunate that you didn't see the same people come out and condemn that when that was happening, but we know what, I guess, you know, we, you know, it's happening. So we should condemn all those things in no uncertain terms, because indeed, our city should have no room for that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Sinanian, just because of those comments and the incidents and violence that happened in Charlottesville, I think this is the list that we could have done. And to remind everyone that Cities of Glendale is committed to a community free of racism, hatred, and bigotry in all forms. And I'd like to read the resolution, which reads, "Whereas on August 12, 2017, during a demonstration in support of white supremacy in Charlottesville, Virginia, 19 counter protesters were seriously injured and Heather Hare was brutally murdered in a related act of terrorism. And whereas H.J. Collin and Burke Bates, two Virginia state troopers, were also killed in a helicopter crash as they were monitoring the events occurring on the ground. And whereas the City of Glendale, California offers its deepest sympathy, compassion, and solidarity to the families of those injured and killed, to those who stood up for justice that day, and to the City of Charlottesville. And whereas the demonstration of white supremacy and hate in Charlottesville is unacceptable, and whereas the United States of America, including the City of Glendale, California, is civilized nation of people and rejects the politics of division and isolation that fan anger and hate toward any group or individual. And whereas the City of Glendale strives to be an inclusive community that champions diversity, embraces immigrant community, respects sexual and gender identity, makes room for all faiths, pursues equity, and rejects hatred, violence, and terrorism. And whereas disagreements can occur respectfully without restoring to or threatening violence and without defeating or destroying property. Whereas the idea that one group of individuals is supreme over another is not only wrong, it is ethically, morally, and criminally reprehensible. And now, therefore, but it resolved by the Council of City of Glendale that the city shall, Section 1, stand together to denounce all forms of hate by any group or individual; Section 2, continue to proudly exercise its fundamental freedoms, including freedom of expression, assembly, and conscience against such hate; and Section 3, shall not be intimidated by the fear of violence by any group or individual that seeks empower themselves to dictate over others."
What's the action on this? Is this motion?
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
May I make a comment now?
Councilmember Devine?
As I look out into the audience tonight, I see a group of Boy Scouts. I see Artie's young son. And I hear the mayor read this resolution. I think that hopefully, the boys are listening. I feel that hatred, bigotry, all begin at home with children. I hope parents are listening. This is the teacher in me coming out. I hope you'll forgive me. But please, teach your children to love each other, to respect each other. We have a very diverse community. We want it to be an inclusive community. We want everyone to treat each other with kindness and respect. I think a resolution like this is a good thing, but I want everyone out there that's listening and watching to take this to heart, especially, as I say, especially parents. Teach your children the right thing to do. Respect each other. And I just want to conclude by saying that today, I sat with a young woman who came to this country at the age of 13. And I asked her what it was like to come from another country, not speaking the language. And she said, "I don't like to look back at that." And I said, "Why not?" And she said, "Because when I went to school, I was beaten up, I was mocked, I was bullied because I didn't speak the language." And that, to me, was very distressing. It's, I hope that today, in this age, that parents are watching for that kind of behavior in their children and teaching them that that is not the right thing. That is not acceptable behavior. That we should accept everyone. Everyone has a reason to be here. Everyone has something to offer. And so we must respect each other and not discriminate, not hate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Is there a motion to?
I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is Oral Communications. If there are any five-minute cards that were submitted, there are none here that were submitted to us.
I don't have any cards either.
Then that would mean that there are no cards for that portion.
There is a.
There was a clerical error that was made on one of the motions. It was a.
I'll move to adjourn, if that's.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'll adjourn.
Thank you.